Good evening. Welcome to Oconee County Board of Commissioners meeting. Today is Tuesday, August the 6th, 2024. After moment of silence, I want to ask Commissioner Harden to lead us in the pledge of the flag. Please stand.
First time my business will be to approve the agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda submitted?
Motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. Next item is any statements or remarks from citizens? Is there anything not on tonight's agenda? Any statements or remarks from commissioners? We want to now thank you to Commissioner Russell McMurray with the Department of Transportation as well as Governor Kemp. We got some additional funding for right-of-way and engineering of the Highway 15 bypass of Watkinsville. That project, they should have an engineer on retainer in the next several weeks. So that's good news that that project is moving forward. Next time it'll be approval of the minutes. This is for July 9th, 2024 as well as July 30th, 2024.
Make a motion to approve the amendment as distributed.
Take it.
Motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. Moving to our hearings and actions on zoning matters. Our first rezon is P-24-0100 Burgess Jennings Mill Land LLC. The request is to modify conditions of a previous B2 zoning which was P-22-0319, 23.92 acres located 1181 Jennings Mill Road.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, again, this is rezon P-24-0100 Burgess Jennings Mill Land LLC applicant and owner. This is located on parcel C-01047A, 046, 046C, and 046B. This is the aerial photography of the parcels. An updated aerial imagery. And the zoning is currently B2 in the regional center character area. And again, the request is to change the conditions of the previous zoning case, P-22-0319, to modify the conditions with no change to the concept plan. Requested changes are number one, to remove daycare center and private schools kindergarten use from the table of disallowed uses that was listed in the previous approval condition, number nine. Number two, require the buildings fronting on the Paul Brown Parkway to be constructed of 80% brick or stone veneer as described in the narrative and that all other buildings be constructed of 50%, a minimum 50% brick or stone veneer so as to be compatible and comparable with existing and future building to be constructed along Virgil Langford Road in the resurgence development project. This is the recorded plat you have in your application packet. This is the concept plan that was approved with the previous rezon you also have in your packets. These are the architectural renderings that were submitted with the application. And additional architectural renderings submitted with the application. And staff recommends conditional approval with our three standard conditions. Number four, an updated traffic impact analysis shall be submitted for review prior to approval of the preliminary site plan for any lot that exceeds 580T as required by the Director of Public Works. Number five, at least 80% of exterior wall surfaces of all buildings and structures shall either be brick veneer, stone veneer, or glass or combination thereof for lots that border the right-of-way of Paul Brown Parkway Loop 10 and the Oconee Connector for lots and lots that for interior lots and lots that border the right-of-way of Virgil Langford. 50% of exterior wall surfaces of all buildings and structures shall be either brick veneer, stone veneer, or glass or combination thereof. Additional primary and accent materials are allowed as indicated in UDC Section 30603. Number six, service areas and dumpsters shall be visually screened from public view by a six-foot masonry wall with facade materials matching the exterior of principal building structures with black painted metal steel enclosure doors. Enclosure doors made of wood or chain link are prohibited. Number seven, all lots that shall be accessed via internal streets, along all lots that shall be accessed via internal streets, a one-foot no access easement shall be recorded on the subject lots as follows. Lot 1 and 7 along Virgil Langford Road right-of-way and Lot 3 and 4 along Oconee Connector right-of-way. Number eight, the total building square footage of the project shall not exceed 174,500 square feet. Number nine, the following uses allowed by right in B2 zoning districts shall not be allowed on the subject property. This is minus the private school and the kindergarten as requested. And the planning commission recommends approval with the same conditions recommended by staff. Thank you.
Ken. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Ken Bell, Bell and Company, and we prepared the rezon documents that you're about to act on this evening. It's a pretty straightforward and relatively simple rezon request. We don't have any problems with any of the conditions that were just spelled out by Mr. Herring. Really, the reason why the rezon has come about is when we originally submitted the request for this property. We generally, normally, on any rezon that we're going to be submitting, we go and look at all of the uses and the ones that we think there's really never going to be any chance that that particular use is going to go in this development. We'll go ahead and exclude them. Well, in this case, one of those that we excluded happened to have been a daycare center which we've done in many other B2 zone classifications because just didn't think our most intents and purposes that there would be a daycare center there. But as it has turned out, we're wrong about that because with the kind of facility that this is actually going to be, which is going to have a substantial amount of medical related components with doctors and doctor's assistants and other physicians and nurses. Those people would like to be able to have their children closer to them after the hard days and nights that they have to put in. So as it turns out, these areas are a good location for daycare facilities and the Goddard School, which is the school that's going to occupy this particular lot in the development, is a very upscale daycare center. So because we had excluded it originally, it's normally a I forget the terminology, but it's normally allowed into B2 by right. That was the phrase I was looking for. But because we excluded it, we now have to come back and ask that it be removed from the exclusion list as Mr. Herring said. The other item that we're addressing is, you know, when we originally rezoned the property several years ago before COVID, building materials were about 50% of what they are today. And so we didn't really have a problem with the 80% brick on all four sides of the buildings. But not everyone in the county has that same condition in their rezon. So in an effort to be able to offer buildings for a more competitive price is why we've asked to be able to allow the reduction of 80% in the original zoning approval to 50%, which is more akin to what is being built in the Development Resurgence Park directly across Virgil Langford Road from where this, the first buildings and where the daycare center will be constructed. So I'm happy to stand here and talk as long as y'all would like for me to answer any issues that you might like to talk about. But I'm going to sit down, but I'm certainly happy to take any questions that any of you might have about this. Thank you.
Does anyone else wish to speak for the rezon request? Does anyone wish to speak against? With that, we'll go ahead and close public comments and open up to questions from commissioners. Will entertain a motion for the rezon?
I'll make a motion to approve rezon P-24-0100 Burgess Jennings Mill Land LLC. Request to modify conditions of a previous B2 zoning. P-22-0319, 23.92 acres, 1181 Jennings Mill Road, current vacant with nine conditions.
Second.
Of a motion and second to approve rezon request P-24-0100 with nine conditions? Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I got a question. What was the communications we had about a condition number 10? I got the wrong rezon? We got an email about a condition number 10.
If there was one needed, but apparently there is not.
Okay.
Like.
All right. Thank you. That's all I had questions about.
Good. Motion second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. Next item is a public hearing on the abandonment of right-of-ways for Hodges Mill Road.
If in your package you'll look at the joiner title service, Hodges Mill Right-of-Way exhibit, the two tracks there that are designated at Oconee County, it's a light green and a light tan are the two pieces. You declared it no longer serving public purposes, right-of-way, last beating. Holly has run ads notifying all property owners that tonight what we need to do is have a public hearing and after that vote, declare the right-of-way abandoned. You'll still own it after the abandonment. Nothing happens until you then take the next step of saying, okay, we're going to sell it. And Mr. Harden had questions about zoning, I think. I think at the time we decide to sell it, it may be appropriate to specifically put the zoning on if we want rather than allow it to be the zoning of the adjoining property. But as long as you own it, the zoning's irrelevant because government do what it wants.
Any questions for Daniel on this island? Do we have any public comment on this island? We entertain a motion?
the zoning of the adjoining property. But as long as you own it, the zoning is irrelevant because government do what it wants.
Any questions for Daniel on this island? Do we have any public comment on this island? We entertain a motion?
Make a motion. We approve the abandonment of right-of-way on Hodges Mill Road.
Second.
We have a motion second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. Does any commissioner wish any item to be removed from the consent agenda? We entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve the items under consent, as mentioned.
Second.
We have a motion second for approval of consent agenda. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. No need of executive session, so Commissioner Sacks.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay. We are adjourned.